And we'll get started. I will just ask, before I open the public consultation, if you have a cellphone that you please put it on vibrate.
That you've reached out.
Thank you.
I've reached out.
All right, so our public consultation session is open and I will ask Brenda, the Director of Corporate Administration, to read out the notice. Please?
Morning. This public consultation is being held to respond to comments received from anyone that may be affected by the proposed amendments to the city's official community plan by law. OCP Amendment Bylaw Number 4361, 2017, proposes to redesignate the property located at 620 106th Avenue from light industrial to mixed use, and there were no written comments received.
Okay, so I will call once for comments. I will call a second time for comments. And I will call a final time for comments. Seeing none, I will close the public consultation session. Now we'll open our public hearing. And again, I'll ask Brenda, our Director of Corporate Administration, to read out the notice of the public hearing.
Thank you. This public hearing is being held to hear from anyone that may be affected by the proposed amendments to the city's official community plan by law and the zoning by law. OCP Amendment Bylaw Number 4361 proposes to redesignate the property located at 620 106th Avenue from light industrial to mixed use. And the zoning amendment by law Number 4362 proposes to rezone the property as shown on the map on the notice, from M2 light industrial to RS2 residential single and duplex. And again, no written comments received.
Thank you, Brenda. Okay, I will call once for comments. Call a second time for comments. And a final time for comments. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. All right, moving right along, we'll open our regular meeting of City Council for October 23rd. New councillor business. Normally I'd be sitting over there, so I get 2.1 is me. And it has to do with the Love Dawson Creek program. And so, at no cost to the city, I would ask that council move to put thelovedawsoncreek.com logo on the back of all of our fleet vehicles. So we have these in red and white. They're about an inch and a half tall and about 10 inches long and on the tailgates or back of the vehicles. And I just think it's a good way to promote the program. So I'd like to move that we do that. Seconded by Charlie. Any comments? All those in favor? Posed? And it's carried. All right, 2.2. I had sent around a notice that Kid 'Map' put out regarding winter parking for their RVs, trailers, and boats. And I guess to staff, I think this is pretty similar to what we have, but I'd be interested to see if there's any differences. I noticed they put out timelines, so there's specific months that it has to be parked. But also, I like the notice that they sent out to the community showing pictures exactly of what is correct and not correct. So is this close to what we have, or are there some differences?
So through you, Madam Chair, I'll just ask Kevin maybe to comment on that.
Two, three, Madam Chair. Currently, what we do is bylaw works with residents. Usually, this time of year, if we start to see RVs, boats parked on the streets, we'll stop by and remind them that it's time to move them. We don't have anything that's specific, like you had turned around, and I think that it would be a great informational piece for the public moving forward. So as we move through finishing up the OCP and into the zoning bylaw update, I think that's where it would fit. It's really a regulatory piece to talk specifically about where it should go or where it shouldn't go. So I think that's, I had shown it to our bylaw officers and they thought it would be very useful. So it's definitely something more interesting.
Okay. Charlie?
So given what's just been shared, I'm wondering if we should diarize this until after we've received our OCP? And is that what you're suggesting, Kevin?
Yes, it's, like I said, it's a regulatory piece. The OCP is a little bit of a bigger visioning piece, so this would fit nicely into the zoning regs.
So I'd like to move that we diarize this to action after we receive our official OCP.
Right. Seconded by councillor Schuman.
Just speaking to the motion, I have shared a number of times that councillor concern about the parking on some of our residential areas and issues of safety. And I think this would be a nice piece to action to try and improve the situation in the community.
And I would like to, so something that I found interesting was the actual timelines. So there was differences for maybe camping months or summer months where the ability to park was different, but come certain months for the winter, it was, this is, so I'd be interested to see how that plays out well or fits within our community. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Posed? It's carried. All right, so moving along. Item 3.1, minutes from the public hearing of council from August 21st. Moved by councillor McFadden, seconded by councillor Schuman. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? It's carried. 3.2, minutes of the regular meeting of council from October 2nd for adoption. Councillor Schuman? Councillor Parslow? During discussion? All those in favor? Posed? All right. Correspondence, 5.1. We have an email from Ruby Noski regarding a request to use Peace Park for a wedding. Councillor Schuman?
I would move that we allow Ms. Noski to have her wedding at the Peace Park. I think it would be a lovely place for a wedding.
Councillor Javet Kostakian? I do have a question to staff. Does this coincide with the music festival in the park or the car show?
So through you, Madam Chair, we've taken a look. It doesn't appear to, although those dates sometimes change a little bit. So we would make this individual aware that it is possible that that festival could be taking place around this time. We'll include that in the letter.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Posed? It's carried. All right, 5.2. We have a letter from Mike Farnworth, Minister of Public Safety and Solicitor General, regarding the local input concerning legalization, regulation of non-medical cannabis. Councillor Schuman?
So a question to staff. Have we commented? Have we sent anything in regarding this yet?
So through you, Madam Chair, no, we haven't sent anything in. We're waiting for feedback from council.
Oh, feedback? Well, I would move that we send something in, whether you want to send out an email asking our feedback and then, because I think it's quite time-sensitive.
Through you, Madam Chair, I believe it's November 1st.
Yeah, so I'd move that we do send in some comments.
Councillor Parslow, are you seconding that motion?
Yes, as it's, as I understand the motion, that we do send in some comments.
And did you have comments?
Yeah, I do think we need to do it here. But I second the motion that we do, and if that doesn't negate us discussing it at this time.
Okay. Is there any other input?
So can we discuss the?
Yes, yes.
The reflections I have on that as a possible useful handle for moving forward is we already have some, I would like to see the regulations that we have as it relates to smoking be applied. I'm concerned that, I don't want us as a municipality to be, what I think would be a disastrous scene is if we have different possession, each community has different possession things. So I could move from Chetwind on my travels, let's say, and 20s there and 15s here, you know, from the point of view of possessions. I think we should have, my hope is that we can move forwards whereby somehow each municipality has the same, because a patchwork thing is just going to, and maybe using the wrong technical term here, be some form of entrapment, you know what I mean? How will an individual know that Fort St. John's got a different level of possession than Dawson Creek, you know? So I would think that part of the feedback is that we avoid a patchwork approach as much as possible, and that we apply the smoking regulations to the smoking of cannabis.
Councillor Schuman?
Yeah, so I attended a workshop in, at UBCM around this whole business, and it seems to me that BC is going to bring down its regulations with regards to what you were just speaking about, the age that people can purchase, where it will be purchasable, where we can go and purchase it from. And then I think that for us, for the municipalities, it comes down to zoning where we will, where we will allow the operation of it. And I think that that depends on what the province brings down. It was my understanding that they'll sort of say, and our province might be different from another province, different from another province, but I think once BC brings out their regulations of how it's going to work in BC, then we can apply that to our zoning, I think, is where we would actually step in. I mean, I'm not sure exactly, but if staff has any comments?
Staff?
So through you, Madam Chair, so we're working on production zoning and regulation already through the licensed production. This is available now, and so we're working on the production side and zoning and regulation. This particular document is talking about where the province can weigh in. It talks about age, it talks about possession, youth possession, public consumption, how many plants are, can be grown, and where indoor/outdoor, talks about distribution and retail, is where this document focuses, which is primarily provincially decided. Bill C-45 leaves the door, they set some, a bar essentially, and a basic level, and the province now has the ability to stick with that or change it, and the province is looking for some feedback in those areas as to where they, where the local governments would like to see them go. So as far as the zoning piece, that is something we're already working on. In this particular document, the piece that would apply to zoning would be kind of that indoor/outdoor and those plants, and how many can be grown.
Councillor Parslow, had his hand up.
You know, the action points that locally for municipalities, I thought, was where it could be consumed, you know, vis a vis public places. And that's why I'm offering for reflection that we apply our smoking regulations to this. Isn't another action point for municipalities, the possession, the quantity? So I'm just basically, one of the other action points for municipalities?
We'll just call it.
Staff, theirs.
So through you, Madam Chair, we can, we can comment on all of these areas, however, the province would have to delegate that authority. So if there were some areas that we wanted some authority to regulate within our community, we would want to indicate that.
Councillor Schuman, did you?
Yeah, so I guess I'm fine with the age of consent being 19, as it is with alcohol. I would be fine with, I suppose, it being distributed through whatever they decide. I mean, they're talking a little bit about through liquor stores or through, I guess, a dispensary-type business. And I'm very much in favor of applying our smoking bylaw to that, if we have that authority. And I think in the paper, it was four plants, no taller than, was it 100 centimeters or something like that, in a residence. So at the workshop, they said, so if there's like five different people living in the residence, each one couldn't have four plants, it would be four plants per residence. So I'm fine with that. It seemed, the regulations that BC was talking about, I felt good about those, so I don't know what y'all think.
Anyone else? So to you Duncan, so someone's setting this up. So then, is, would the municipalities be requiring business licenses? Like, how do we identify these legal draws?
So through you, Madam Chair, this really addresses that recreational piece. If anybody is selling or growing on behalf of, we're already working in that area. Maybe I'll ask Kevin to provide some comment. We don't have anything in front of council yet, but we are working our way through that regulation piece. Kevin, maybe just talk about business license and what we've learned so far.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. Alex has been to a couple of sessions, one that was in Fort St. John, a legal firm that came up and kind of walked through the progression of adult bylaws for business licenses, zoning and all that. So there's a lot of information out there, and we're starting to put a lot of that together, but we've also been waiting, not trying to get in front of, you know, federal provincial regulations.
Kind of a waiting game.
It is kind of a waiting game.
Yeah, so through you, Madam Chair, there is some uncertainty, and so before we get out there and create a, you know, a number of bylaws or regulations, we want to understand exactly, you know, what is within our ability to regulate. And that's, we work our way through, as I said before, the production piece and for the medical side is out, and so we're prepared to do some work on that right now. But as you can see, there's still a number of items where Bill C-45 sets a bar and the province has the ability to decrease or increase in some of those areas.
So with the information now that council has put forward, do we need to make a motion on these points for input?
So through you, Madam Chair, right now, the direction we have from council is just to send a letter. We don't have any consensus of council of what we want to include. I believe there's been some discussion regarding the same regulation as smoking or alcohol, and so we would like that included, if that's where council sits.
Okay, so, oh, sorry, councillor Javet Koff.
You know, obviously what they're asking for is some input into how they're going to proceed with provincial regulations. Now, I don't know if there's a deadline. This letter was dated September 21st, which is a month ago. And it doesn't seem to have a deadline as far as, oh, I see November 1st. So we've got to respond here in the next five days. So I think it's, you know, the way we should proceed is through email, like Duncan can send us an email and ask us what our concerns are, issues, and that's going to have to be compiled in the next few days, and a response letter drafted and sent out. So I think that's a way to handle it, so we all have some input, and then sort of the consensus is the response.
So what I have right now, and just exactly for time-wise, is that the age of consent be no less than 19, that communities need to know where dispensaries will be, that our smoking bylaws be used as far as where it can be used. And then Cheryl had mentioned the four plants, no higher than 170 centimeters. And that was from the province, right? Yeah. So is that enough time if we reply by email, and then we would have to ratify it right at the next meeting? Or do you guys want to put more input on this and just give this to staff to input? Councillor Rogers?
I would be saying at a minimum, at a minimum, we should just be, we could put out what we're looking at right now at a minimum. But through the process of consultation between the federal government and the provincial government, tell us what you want, like, tell us what you're doing, and then maybe we can respond, because right now, we're trying to respond to something that we don't even know what we're responding to.
No, that's not true.
Councillor Schuman?
But that's not true, because they have sent us all sorts of information about what they're proposing for BC. And that's what I'm talking about, the, you know, the four plants, the consent age of 19. There's a whole desk, papers, and there's lots of information out there, so.
But until...
And it's right here.
Yeah, I know, I read it all. But until it actually is something that they're going to say, that until it's a law or they're, this is what we're proposing for our laws and our rules and our regulations, aren't we kind of?
But they're asking you to comment on what they're proposing.
Right. And that's what they... Well, my personal comment would be that for medical purposes, sure, I'm fine with that. For recreational purposes, I would think that it should be, the age limit should be a lot higher, because youth's brains are still developing up until they're over 20 years old. So, and it's been a proven fact that, you know, cannabis does affect the brains of It's just, that's my personal feelings, but this is all going to go ahead anyways. But I just think that it's, until they actually say this is exactly what we're going to do, how can you comment?
Out to staff.
So through you, Madam Chair, we can, we can draft up a letter for council's review to be ratified at the next meeting. We can send it out and have council provide feedback just to move this forward. If amended, we can include the items that were discussed today in the resolution and put that letter together and have that prepared for the deadline.
Okay, so and our motion is to actually send the input, is what our motion is on the floor. Okay. Is everyone fine with that? Having, okay, so all those in favor? Posed? And it's carried. All right, 5.3. Memo from the Deputy Director regarding the Greyhound service reduction letter. Councillor Parslow?
I move that the decision to send a letter to the BC Passenger Transportation Branch opposing Greyhound Canada's application to the BC Passenger Transportation Branch to alter its service in Central and Northern BC be ratified.
Councillor Schuman? Any discussion? Councillor Rogers?
The last sentence of the letter, therefore it is respectfully requested that you deny Greyhound's application. So you've got a private company that wants to, that's losing money or for other reasons are going to stop servicing their routes, et cetera, but yet we've got government telling them that they can't do it?
Well, so I was, I did attend the meeting with the minister, and the issue is, this is not a new thing that Greyhound has done, so they have created themselves a monopoly. Then, when their business plan fails, they ask the government for a subsidy. And so that is part of their application, that they be subsidized by the taxpayers. And so the communities of North Central BC were represented and met the minister. Mayor Bumstead was there, Mayor Lynn Hall, and we had mayors from other communities. Was that Greyhound requested this before, I believe in 2015 or 2014, they cut the service. With that, they cut freight service and a lot of other things. This time, their application is based on passengers. And so what was asked, that all the communities write in, in opposition of their application, but also that they be able to meet with Greyhound to talk about maybe a better business plan for interconnection city services. So this is not something new from Greyhound, they've done it over the years. They've, you know, gone through bankruptcy, they've been bailed out of bankruptcy, and they've bought up all of their competition in most of the provinces in Canada and created themselves a monopoly. Now they basically are putting themselves out of service, but it's affecting our communities. Councillor Schuman?
So we've already sent a letter, we're just asking council to ratify the fact that we've sent that letter, so it's been moved and...
Yeah, it has been moved and seconded.
No, thank you, Madam Chair, because there is some of the things that you're telling me I did not know.
All right, so all those in favor? Posed? It's carried. All right, 5.4. We have a letter from Penny and Darcy Smith of the Sunridge Apartments regarding dangers on 15th Streets. Councillor Javet Koff?
I move that we receive this for information and refer it to the RCMP.
Seconded by councillor McFadden. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's carried. All right, so 5.5. I'm going to ask councillor Schuman to take the chair for a moment.
So we've got 5.5 is a letter from councillor Wilbur, as the president of our North Central Local Government Association. It is an update about what we've been doing at NCLGA. There's a couple of things in there about change of dates around our resolutions, and I'm sure you've all read it, so what's your pleasure?
I move that we receive it as information.
Okay. Second. Councillor Javet Koff? And any discussion?
I think it's, I may be amiss here, so excuse me, I'm pleased to receive a report from the NCLGA like this.
Okay, so all in favor? Posed? Nobody? Thanks.
Good job.
We sent the letter back. Rewrite then.
Yeah.
Well, I should have known in proper procedure, I laughed, because it was from me and it's a very nice letter.
It is a very nice, Charlie said it was a very nice letter.
Thank you.
He was pleased to get it.
Perfect. All right, 5.6. We have a letter from the BC Community Achievement Awards. And Mayor Bumstead asked that we put this on here. I believe, and Duncan can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe he wanted to get some input from council on community members that we could nominate for this achievement award.
So through you, Madam Chair, yeah, unfortunately, the mayor couldn't be here. He was just bringing to everybody's attention, there's a number of people within our community worthy of this award that are strong community advocates and wanted to create an opportunity for council to maybe nominate some of those individuals, and so we could submit a nomination form.
Councillor Parslow?
So just wondering, how are we going to handle this? Is this going to be something that we'll submit to the suggested names to the mayor, and we will then discuss it as a council, at the next council meeting? Is there a time sensitivity to this?
Through you, Madam Chair, it's, deadline for nominations is January 15th, 2018, so we have some time on this one.
Okay, so I think the mayor's alerted us to this. Maybe we should put it on a subsequent council meeting, and by then, we, I would suggest that we submit potential nominees to the, to the mayor by, in time for our next council meeting for ratification.
Does that work, Duncan? Seconded, councillor Javet Koff?
I was just going to ask a question, actually. Aren't these type of things, these nominations, directed at individuals to nominate? I mean, if city council nominates somebody, isn't there sort of a perceived advantage or that compared to me as a person nominating somebody? Like, the way I read these things, that they're nominations from individuals or...
Councillor Schuman?
Yeah, generally, what we do with these things is receive them for information, let everybody out in the community know that this is happening, that there is a BC Achievement Awards going on, and to please submit the names. I don't think that we've ever nominated as a council before, but I see no problem with doing so if that's what the mayor wants to do.
Yeah. I'd be comfortable as a council nominating, and there are some people, tremendous people in the community I can think of, that the council as a whole appreciates their work, so why not? It doesn't say that an individual can't.
Or a council can't. Councillor Rogers?
So how do we get the information out to the community to let them, I guess we just did?
Yeah, maybe the press who's not here.
I believe also that we could probably put it on our Facebook page, and so we have some social media outlets that we could utilize to also put it out to the public. So councillor Parslow, you are, are you making that wave of motion that council submit names to the mayor and we have it put on the next agenda for discussion?
I am.
Great. Councillor McFadden is seconding that. Do we have any more discussion on it? All in favor? Posed? Councillor Javet Koff is opposed, but it's carried. All right, we are one minute out from delegations. Am I safe to move into that, Brenda?
I will go.
The Rotary Club is here. So we have Tammy Shields and representatives from the Rotary here for World Polio Day Proclamation. And I have that, and I have glasses, so we're good.
Yep, you guys are allowed to come on.
Yeah.
I'll head up here.
Everybody, we've got to make it look like there's more than one person in Rotary here.
All Rotarians, perhaps. Hi Jill, how are you? With all these fine gentlemen I get to stand with, see, I should be like Dale, like getting hugs all day long. All right, comments coming in? Okay, all right. So whereas every year in October, people around the world shine a spotlight on the importance of global eradication of polio. And whereas World Polio Day is a Rotary International Initiative to help create awareness of the ravages of polio and garner support for eradication efforts. And whereas each year the number of new cases of polio declines, and we are very close to complete eradication of the disease worldwide, I now do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2017 as World Polio Day in Dawson Creek. Congratulations.
I'll let you go first before I take a picture. Okay, thank you Acting Mayor Wilbur. Pleasure to be here again, just a brief update as of this morning. Polio, as I've mentioned the last few times I've been here, Rotary started on its polio effort in 1985, we were joined by World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and UNICEF in 1988, and at that time, there were 350,000 cases per year, new cases per year, of wild polio virus in 125 polio endemic countries. As of this morning, in 2017, we have three polio endemic countries. Number one, Nigeria, and it has not seen a case since August of 2016. Number two, Pakistan, who has had five new cases this year, the last one was in August of 2017, and Afghanistan, which has seen seven new cases this year. So globally, we have 12 new cases, the last one in Pakistan was in September of 17. 12 new cases, we are getting very, very close, Afghanistan is definitely the tough one, there's a lot of people in very rural villages that don't believe in the polio vaccine. In Canada, we have not seen a case of wild polio virus since the late 80s, but we do have an issue. Just recently, I obtained a copy of vital signs from the Grand Prairie Peace River area that indicates that less than 67% of two-year-olds have received vaccination for polio, measles, and mumps. And, and that's a problem. Polio is still a disease that travels very quickly. During the World Cup in Brazil in 2014, there were traces of the polio virus found, and it came from Africa. So it really is only a plane ride away, and we need to continue to advocate. While I'm up here, I want to recognize Frank Ripley and Rip's cleats. Frank has come on board with our initiative, and Rip's cleats now donates to polio and polio eradication with every pair of cleats that they sell. So I would encourage you all to go buy some cleats, because we need the money. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Judge. Mr. Judge, let me please step forward. Nice try.
Remember, this one's going on Facebook.
Oh, very good.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, thanks for everything that you guys do.
Is there a library meeting? Are you going?
And there goes a whole bunch of Community Achievement Awards nominees.
That's right.
I understand.
Thanks, love you guys.
Yeah, Rotary Club leaves and we have no gallery. Do we have our next delegation coming?
We have a meeting tomorrow morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Melanie, we have a meeting tomorrow morning.
We're moving our, we're moving our. All right, is Joyce coming? No?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Apologies, Joyce had an emergency this morning, so she was unable to attend. And normally she is the speaker, and I'm the behind the scene person for organizing the event. So I'll be just brief and quick here. Wednesday is Canada Light Conservation Dinner, and we're hoping everyone will come out and join us for this event. We have quite a few restaurants participating again this year, and we have quite a few businesses that have stepped up to the plate to donate a one-night stay and dinner for two, for the people that go out to eat, they get ten to the draw. Just a couple of things, people ask me the question, well, does it really make a difference if you have this Canada Light Conservation Dinner? Like, how does it, aren't you using more power? And it's the little things that make a difference. So over the years, the number of years that tourism, Dawson Creek and Sustainable Dawson Creek have been working together to bring to the community this evening out. And I believe it's the little things that make a difference, and I have Todd here from Browns that's going to have a, would like to talk to you for just a minute to tell how Browns has done over the years.
Yeah, so first off, we never did really think it would make a difference, but it does, right? Even the little things, just changing your light bulbs, turning your power off like once in a while. The big thing, I also think that it does make a difference for that one day, is all the restaurants teaming up together and getting together, and everybody leaving their homes and turning off all the stuff for that one hour, two hours that this is going on, right? You will see that it does make a little bit of a difference, and every little bit will count, so.
And this is Kelly from Neat, and she's, they're going to be doing a free waste assessment for the city, and we're looking at offering that up to the restaurants in the community to participate. And I'm happy to say that we've gone from all the TVs being on in the restaurants to some of them shutting one or two off. So it has made a difference in our, our community and for the evening. And we hope that everyone was able to come out and join us, and we're still looking for meters and greeters, so if our council are interested in participating to help out, just please let me know, and they can let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
What's that?
So everybody go and, and the restaurant to eat on Wednesday, it's always a fun, fun event. Okay, so we're going to move right along into reports, we have 7.1 from the General Manager of Development Services. Counselor Parslow?
I'd like to move the report 17-158 from the General Manager of Development Services, re-request for quotations, 2017-40 Airport Motor Grader be received. Further, the council award RFQ 2017-40 to Brent Tractor Limited for the delivery of one new motor grader for the total of 315,650 plus GST and shipping.
Seconded by Counselor Schuman, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. All right, 7.2, we have report number 17-161 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the walkway policy. Counselor Schuman?
Okay, so we, um... It appears we have three recommendations. Oh my God, why did I put my hand up for this? Don't read all three? No, I'm, I'm going to. So first, we need to deal with a motion we made on October 2nd, 2017. Staff is suggesting that we defeat that motion as this policy ensures the public input is received and legislation requirements are met, so if...
So we just need to call that motion back to the floor, Duncan?
So through you, Madam Chair, just one, one piece of information received since this report was submitted, that is that Mr. Lokey has reached out to staff indicating he'd like to attend the November 6th meeting as a delegation to speak further regarding the walkway and his, his desire to purchase that, and asked that I would make council aware that he had hoped we would wait to make a decision before, or to hear him first. So just put that out there right now, as we move through.
What is the will of council, Counselor Rogers?
Well, I'd like to wait and hear what Mr. Lokey has to say. So we defer to our next meeting?
So then we would leave, we wouldn't bother putting the other motion forward and defeating it, Brenda, just move it?
I'd like to hear what Mr. Lokey has before, then I can have all the information.
So that's for... I just want to hear from Brenda first, please, so that's recommendation.
Through you, Madam Chair, if this motion is passed to defer, we would just move this whole report to the next meeting.
All right, so we have a motion to defer. Seconded by Counselor Parslow. Duncan?
So through you, Madam Chair, I think Counselor Schuman had started a...
Sorry, yes, Counselor Schuman did start it.
The motion to defer.
Yeah, doesn't the motion to defer sort of override me?
Everything?
Yeah, I think so, that's my thing, yeah.
So that, so it's deferred now to the next meeting?
Yeah, we didn't have a second there for them, I'm not sure.
Counselor Parslow seconded the motion to defer, but Counselor Schuman was...
So can we...
Oh, sorry, yes, I was...
Can we, so we're deferring that part of it, but there's other parts of it, can we not do the other parts, or the whole thing has to go?
Duncan?
So through you, Madam Chair, it's, it's up to council how you'd like to proceed, I just wanted to make sure council had that information.
Counselor Parslow?
My understanding of seconding this motion is that we're deferring the whole topic until after we've heard from Mr. Lokey at the next meeting.
All right, so we need to, does that just leave it like that then, we don't need to, we need to vote even to defer it?
Definitely need to vote.
Okay, so all those in favor of deferring all of it? Opposed, all right, it's carried, to defer, Counselor Javecov?
I just had a question on the, the report. It talks about the administration feeling that we have to keep this walkway in place.
So Counselor Javecov, we deferred it, so that conversation would take place at the next council meeting?
This would be some additional information that would be helpful when we defer it, or when we, when we...
So I need staff's direction on that because we voted to defer.
When we lifted from the table?
Yeah, I just...
Or can I just send an email and ask for that information?
I think that, would Counselor Javecov just send an email requesting that information, then we get it back? Because we have moved and carried it to defer.
So unless there's another motion regarding the topic, there can't be any discussion at the meeting regarding this.
So do you want to just send those questions to staff via email, and then we can reply to all?
I'll send Duncan an email, or maybe I'll text them. Maybe I'll text them right now.
No, you may not.
I don't know if we're allowed to do that, actually.
I asked you to shut all phones off at the beginning of the day. All right, 7.3, we have report 17-163 from the project manager regarding the RV Sandy Dump Potable Water Supply Update, Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I want to make this motion before Counselor Rogers opens his mouth on it. That report 17-163 from the project manager, RV Sandy Dump Potable Water Supply Update be received. Further, that the installation of a potable water dispensing station to the RV Sandy Dump at 212 115th Avenue be approved, and further that the water be provided at no cost to users.
Seconded. Seconded by Counselor Schuman, any discussion?
Well, we...
What?
All right.
We did get email from Duncan about the use, the quantity of water used, both at the Mile Zero and at this one, and I know in Counselor Schuman's mind and my mind, we can't conceive of a Sandy dump without potable water, so we're delighted, I think, aren't we?
We are delighted.
That we, that we've moved to plug the hole, no pun intended.
I think Counselor McFadden looks delighted also.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed?
Don't, don't you think he looks delighted?
They're ecstatic about potable water. All right, 7.4, we have report number 17-165 from our Chief Financial Officer regarding budget assumptions. They're all looking for it, they'll, they'll get it up shortly, and...
It's just a really, really long report.
At break, everyone needs to get a coffee.
I put the wrong...
Counselor Schuman?
So I would move report number 17-165 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding our 2018 budget assumptions timeline and public consultation process report be received for information and discussion, and further that the following recommendations be approved as presented below. That the 2018 budget timeline be approved as presented. That the 2018 public consultation process follows prior year's modernized method to use the city's website and other online platforms to provide budget information to a wider demographic, and further that if contentious issues arise during the process, that council agrees to host two face-to-face town hall meetings to gather feedback from the public. That the 2018 financial plan be based on the principles and values included in the city's vision, mission, and guiding principle documents, council's 2015 to 2018 strategic planning document, and other bylaws and policy documents. That the list of city services funded in 2017 will form the basis for the 2018 budget absent a new city services policy. That the methodology used in preparing the 2018 financial plan be based on an integrated and long-term approach to setting tax rates, fees, and charges, as well as service provision. That any funding gap created in the current operations budget from rising service and program costs and lower-than-forecasted operating revenues be funded by a combination of tax rate increases and/or targeted service reductions and/or reductions to the 2018 capital plan. As well, that the long-term development plan as presented be used as the city's guide to the Peace River Agreement funding use.
Do we have a second there? Counselor McFadden?
The usual...
Any discussion?
Assumptions.
Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I, alas, the penultimate paragraph in this set of recommendations that reads that any funding gap created in the current operations budget for rising service of program costs and lower-than-forecasted operating revenues be funded by a combination of tax rate increase, da-da, and service reductions and so on. Well, we've, in our five-year cap, plan, we have already proved that there would be no tax increase in this year. So I'd like to hear from the financial officer why this flip-flop.
Duncan?
So through you, Madam Chair, I'll pass that over to our new CFO, and we'll put him on the spot here.
Both feet in the water, let's go.
So through you, Chair, the five-year plan, you guys can set what you want in motion. Now, what the plan is to the actual is where the decisions will have to be made to close a gap if one appears. to close a gap if one appears. And there's two ways you can do that. You can bring in more money or you can spend less money. I'm saying here that if there is a gap or discrepancy, one of these two things will have to be addressed.
Seems clear to me.
Duncan?
So through you, Madam Chair. And just to build off of that, it's a, it's a moving document over five years. Things aren't static within the community and we have to adapt sometimes, as we did last year when we received, uh, less money than, uh, projected with the Peace River Agreement. But as Adam said, uh, you either need to find new money or reduce the expenses. So, uh, we're counting for that and preparing if needed. Hopefully not.
I like to be prepared. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, and I don't find this any different from any other year. I mean, it makes perfectly good sense. And it's, it's no different than, than any, any other year that, that we, we see how much money we have and if there's not enough, we either reduce the service or we increase taxes. So I, I don't find anything out of the ordinary with this.
Counselor Parslow is dying to say something.
Yes. So, uh, that just shows you the value of these five-year plans that we do. We're just, uh, not worth the paper they're written on. The last paragraph here, that the long-term development plan as presented be used as the city's guide. Help me, what is this long-term development plan? Which, which, uh, document are you referring to?
Duncan?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'll ask Adam to answer that.
Through you, Chair. The long-term development plan is a portion of the Peace River, uh, funding agreement. And it, um, was a reporting requirement that was brought in by the ministry.
Okay, so this has got nothing to do with the purported ratios of funding, using that funding source split between capital and operating.
Would you be able to clarify that one again?
I can, I can clarify. So through you, Madam Chair, this is the 60/40 ratio in which councils determine the Peace River Agreement. So that long-term development plan will, will capture that. That's counsel's, um, direction. And it's, it... I just sat in at UBCM with the Peace River Agreement or Funding Agreement, um, team and we had these discussions about our templates and our forms. And the long-term development plan is essentially what guides us, but is also a moving document because things change within the community and aren't static. It's a requirement of the CFO to submit this in order for us to receive our Peace River Agreement funding.
Right.
Same, same topic. When did counsel, uh, make a decision around the 60/40?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. I would, I could provide that information. I don't know if Adam knows that offhand either. I could provide that information.
My, my, uh, understanding, just so you know, my understanding is that, uh, we are working to regi, continue to reduce the, the amount of, uh, this external funding source that we use for operating that isn't etched in stone. So I'd like to, I think this is an important topic because if staff's operating from the point of view that this is a fixed ratio, that's different from at least one council member's understanding that that, uh, we are, we're trying to move more and more away from using it as a... I mean, look at the nervousness at this table when the new government was elected, right? It just shows the vulnerability of this community to this external funding. So, uh, I just, I just like to have a further discussion about that. Where does this come from?
So through you, Madam Chair. When Adam brings forward his next budget report, we'll provide that history on that, uh, that split on the funding.
Thank you.
And I just want to add, uh, thank you, Adam. I, I really appreciate this. But I also appreciate the fact of that being prepared and having it out there right from the get-go that things can change over five years. So we're prepared with our options of what we may or may not need to do depending on what happens. So thank you for putting that in there. Um, any other discussion on this motion? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? And it is carried. All right, so we have 7.5. Report number 17-166 from our chief administrative officer. Uh, request for comment on the Peace River Regional District referral for temporary use permit. Counselor Jevetkov?
Uh, the report number 17-166 from the chief administrative officer requests for comment on Peace River Regional District referral for temporary use permit. Application file 211 slash 2017 be received. Further, that approval is recommended to the Peace River Regional District subject to the following conditions. The length of the temporary use permit is shortened to 18 months. If renewal is considered after 18 months, the City of Dawson Creek is given an opportunity to provide comments.
Secondary, Counselor Rogers. Any discussion? Counselor Schuman?
Um, so recently, I sat in on the, as the alternate for the Peace River Regional District, I sat in on their, um, waste, uh, solid waste management meeting. And there was, um, some conversation around the table with regards to camps and the solid waste, um, produced from camps. And, um, there was some talk at that table about putting in some parameters around solid waste at the temporary use permit time, like when they came in to, um, ask for these, these temporary use permits. Um, and so I, I would like for, um, the, the regional district to also have some consideration about, put some considerations into this agreement, um, around solid waste. I don't know if we can ask them to do that or if they would do that automatically since we had that conversation at the last solid waste management meeting. But I think that, um, I mean, we, we, we got a big report on, um, several of the camps around, uh, the regional district. And, um, you know, seeing a lot of, a lot of waste and not a lot of recycling, that kind of stuff going on. So I, I would like to see some parameters within our temporary use permits, their temporary use permits, because it's not really ours, be put in around waste redu, waste reduction and solid waste management. I don't know how we do that, being it's theirs.
Okay, Duncan?
So through you, Madam Chair. We received this, uh, request for, um, information regarding, or request for, uh, approval or, or whatnot from the regional district. And then there's a comment section and that's where the, the conditions can be included. And if this is a condition counsel would like to include in that section, we can amend the, the motion to include it. I'm not aware, and I'll ask Kevin just for clarification, if anything has changed as far as, as camps. I know Kevin sits in on some of those meetings. He may have some information. I don't know if you've heard anything, Kevin? Just the requirement to have recycling or different types of disposal methods at the camps?
No, I haven't heard anything from him.
So, wi, without, uh, this may be something they've implemented. We're not certain. But if it's something counsel would like to include in the conditions, we can amend the, amend the motion.
Counselor Jevetkov, are you okay with that?
I have no problem with adding a third bullet there to, uh, ensure that there's, uh, adequate recycling or however, however it's worded.
Solid waste management?
Hmm, and recycling.
And recycling. Okay. All right, all those in favor?
On the amendment?
On the amendment? That's carried. All right. Uh, all those in favor on the motion as amended? And it's carried. All right, so let's move to 7.6 and then after that, we'll take a small break. So 7.6, report number 17-167 from the Development Services Manager regarding, um, the development permit for the SPCA. Counselor Parslow?
Move the report 17-167 from the Development Services Manager redevelopment permit application 17-04 at 11481 Third Street be received. Further, the development of 11481 Third Street be approved in principle. Further, the staff be directed to proceed with required 10-day notification period. And further, the issuance of the permit be subject to receipt of financial security in the amount of 125% of the value of landscaping, including hard surfacing.
Secondary, Counselor Schuman? Any discussion? Counselor Jevetkov?
I'm just wondering about the development of Third Street. Is that something that will be put in as a responsibility for the developer? Or is that something the city will be constructing?
Staff?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'll ask Kevin to comment.
Through you, Madam Chair. The city has no budget in order to construct Third Street. So any upgrades there will be part of that SPCA development. So we'll be having those discussions with that prior to building.
So my understanding is that'll be in a development permit that they are required to develop Third Street as a street under the same conditions or standards as, as the city typically uses?
Right. Through you, Madam Chair. Development permits do not, uh, cover, uh, the development of streets. Development permits are form and character for the structure itself, landscaping. Building permit is where, um, any of those requirements would come into play. So prior to building permit, um, that's when they'd have to do that or as part of that.
Counselor Schuman?
Um, so, wha, what does that involve? Like, are, are they going to be able to do that? If, if we can't afford to do it, how, how are they going to afford to do it? What, what does it involve? Is it just...
So, Third Street, that area is, is gravel.
Yeah.
It's not paved, it's not curb and gutter, and it doesn't connect to any pave or curb and gutter. So that's not going to be necessary.
Okay.
Uh, it's really going to be about just making sure that the road is suitable for traffic. Might need some, so gravel, might need some ditch work, but I don't expect it being too extensive.
And that's just along their property?
Just running into their property because there's a short piece of Third Street that actually ends at this property in question. So, and I've been out there for a while, I'll be honest with you, to, to look at it, but it may require some form of improvements in order to make it...
Accessible. Okay, thank you.
Any other?
Same goes.
Scared me.
Same goes for the potable side.
All right, so no other, so you know there are...
Yeah, I know.
People wanting to discuss. So all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried.
I was freaking out.
All right, let's take a seven-minute break. 8.1, and that's the official community plan amendment, and that's under bylaws.
Move that we have that reading and adoption?
Secondary?
Yep.
Counselor McFadden? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. All right, 8.2. We have a zoning amendment bylaw, um, for the third reading and adoption. Counselor Rogers?
Move the third reading and adoption.
Secondary? Counselor Schuman? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. Um, 8.3, we have the permissive tax exemption bylaw for adoption. Counselor Schuman? Counselor Jevetkov? Discussion? All those in favor? And it's carried?
I was opposed.
Reopposed?
Yeah, only because there's some things that are in that that I still do not agree with that are being executed.
All right. Duly noted, Counselor Rogers was opposed. All right, 8.4. Uh, report from the Director of Corporate Administration.
Oopsie.
Counselor Schuman?
Uh, move report 17-159 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the 2017 local area service project bylaws be received. Further, that the local area service parcel tax rule preparation amendment bylaw number 4363 2017 and local area service parcel tax amendment bylaw number 4364 2017 be given the first of three readings.
Secondary? Counselor McFadden? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. 8.5, report number 17-168 from our Director of Development Services regarding fees and, fees and charges amendment bylaw. Counselor Parslow?
The report 17-168 from the Development Service Manager fees and charges amendment bylaw number 4365 2017 be received. Further, the bylaw 4365 2017 be given first three readings.
Secondary by Counselor Rogers. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. All right, Mayor Baumstod didn't have anything under mayor's business, but just because I can, I would like to remind everybody Halloween is coming up, so our little trick-or-treaters will be out there. So they're not always dressed in bright, knowledgeable costumes, so slow down, watch for them. And if you have the opportunity, you can take them out to the haunted village, out at Pioneer Village during, on October 31st. And I know the Kiwanis Club is doing it this year and I believe there's fireworks afterwards. So, but again, do watch out for those little trick-or-treaters because they're not watching for you, so we need to watch for them. All right, diary. Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I need to talk about diary here. My computer's misbehaving, but I'll get down. Just hold on. Oh, diary, no, I don't, sorry.
Consent calendar. Diary, okay. Consent calendar?
Yep.
Okay.
Number two, we should send the letter.
Uh, yes, number two, letter from Carol Taylor, coordinator of programs at the Lakeview Learning Center regarding Northern Development Initiative Trust application. Counselor Rogers? Like to move that we do that? Secondary? Do we need to have a secondary for that or just move it all? So Counselor Schuman? Do you want to give us any input on that? Counselor Rogers?
Um, no, it's, it's just standard stuff. They, uh, BC Hydro, GoFund, uh, they're just applying their money through that. And NDIT manages that amount of money that came in. That was part of it.
So, uh, the motion is not to move it all, so we would just be moving a letter also for then, um, regarding the Dawson Creek?
I wanted to make sure that we support through the...
Through the letter, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then the Dawson Creek District Chamber Commerce Support of the city's position on work camps within city limits. So we're moving that as well. All right, all those in favor? Is that as one, or do we do it separate, Brenda?
Um, as far as I understand, just the second item?
Yeah.
We're sending a letter of support.
Yeah.
And then, um, the other two items will just be received for information.
Information, all right.
But that'll be a separate motion request.
Okay, so we need a separate motion then for item number three and one. So we need a motion to receive for information, are you making?
I'll move that, too.
First, um, first the vote.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. All those in favor on the letter of support? Getting ahead of myself, thank you. And opposed? It's carried.
Okay, and I'll move the, uh, receive for information for item number one and three.
Okay, secondar? Counselor McFadden? All in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. All right, sorry, I was getting ahead of myself. Uh, strategic priorities chart. Counsel Parcel?
Yeah, I, uh, Mayor and I talked about this a little while ago, and subsequent to that, I met with Duncan. Uh, it was last week, wasn't it Duncan?
Correct.
Yeah. And Duncan has since had a chat with the mayor, so the mayor knows I'm bringing this forward. Um, but just as a, if I may, a bit of a refresher, uh, because I think there's a little bit of, uh, need to refocus on this. If you looked in that strategic plan thing, there's a corporate vision. I remind you, like to remind Counsel that the facilitators of that meeting commented that, uh, the vision we have, which is all posted up in this nice chart over here, is a, really is a community vision. And as a Counsel, we did not have a corporate vision. We adopted this corporate vision, uh, at a meeting after the planning meeting. So if you go to the 2015 actions, the first bullet, Counsel adopt a corporate vision reflecting the strategic focus, that was done and is the corporate vision that's in this document. Counsel developed a clear statement of purpose for the Fistual Gap Initiative. That is done, that's been posted, and is printed widely. The third bullet, the, the core values and guiding principles is covered by the guiding principles over here on this chart. That we would apply those guiding principles when we do this work. The fourth bullet has not been done. The fifth bullet, we decided to defer that until after the OCP. The next bullet was pursued, and, uh, we, uh, the work that was done led by the mayor led to us, uh, with the, to the Peace River, current Peace River Accord. The last bullet, staff developed for Counsel and the community educational materials relative to the Fistual Gap Initiative. The background work was presented by, uh, Chief Financial Officer of the day, Shelley, and was, uh, by Counsel. So the two pieces of work that I talked today about that needed to be done is educational materials for the community around Fistual Gap Initiative, and to establish targets for buy-in by internal, external stakeholders. And, um, so I am expecting that we will receive some report about ways of launching those two bullets sometime this, like this fall. Is that your understanding from the mayor, Duncan?
Yeah, uh, if Counsel would like, sorry, through you, Madam Chair, if Counsel would like to see, um, maybe a process to address bullet number four and bullet number seven. Uh, if Counsel would like to, to see that, say, in the next meeting or in the, in, within the next reasonable timeframe, a resolution would probably help move that forward. We do have a, a list with a number of items on it that Counsel has asked staff to work on. If you'd like to prioritize this, um, maybe a resolution and support from Counsel, and I can bring that forward, a process on how to address those two bullets in particular that are outstanding, and maybe even address, uh, the corporate vision and the values guiding principles, and just Counsel, whether Counsel supports that that's been completed or would like some additional work in those areas.
Counsel Parcel?
I'd like to make such a motion that we have staff provide, uh, an outline of the plan of, of moving bullet four and seven forward to engage the community.
Secondar by Counsel Rogers?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. Okay.
So just to add, I, I believe at that point, uh, Duncan, I guess, wasn't at the table when, uh, we did that corporate vision, so he, I just wondered if you understood that we were told we didn't have one, a corporate vision. We adopted our corporate vision, so that first bullet was done almost immediately.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Okay, question and answer period?
No, I'm signed up.
Marlin, do you wanna be the media? No? No media questions? All right, so we have committee of the whole reports. Welcome, welcome.
Good morning. Good to see everybody again.
Mayor Baumstod took a new look today.
Pardon me?
Mayor Baumstod took a new look today.
Oh, that's okay. So does staff to go vote, so that's all right.
All right.
All right. Well, um, the summer months, we've had some changes in the detachment. Personnel-wise, we've lost Constable Jones. She's now in Prince Rupert. She's, uh, training for her new ident duties. Uh, but we received Constable James Deibert from Nunavut. And, uh, he's ex on shift now, and, uh, and, uh, is doing well. We've got three other members on transfer status, so as soon as they sell their homes, unfortunately, they'll be gone. But again, on the good news side, we have two cadets that have been signed off, and, uh, they're on the road, and, and, uh, they got all the work coming to them. Also, over the summer, we, we, with all the forest fires and stuff down south, we were rotating members down on a relief basis. And we were also sending, uh, equipment down to help as well. So, over the summer, you know, sometimes we're kinda short of both manpower and equipment, but, you know, it's, uh, because of what was going on down there, it was a necessity. The fall fair came and went without any major incidents, and, uh, we're still debriefing with the organizers, uh, about what went well, what didn't, and, uh, so we continue on for next year. For municipal calls for service, they pretty, remained pretty much constant over the summer, uh, between six hundred and seven hundred per month. However, so far to date, we're seven hundred and fifty, uh, calls ahead of where we were at this point last year. So it's getting a little busier. And on the mental health front, um, calls for service hover between eight and fourteen, uh, per month over the summer months, and, uh, time associated was averaged about thirteen hours, uh, per month. So, nothing too serious there. As you guys have probably heard, um, stolen vehicles have been a big problem over the summer, primarily the older style, uh, Super Duty Fords. The deposit fund, a lot, a lot of them have been recovered. The public still has to do their part to help out. I was involved with the recovery one, uh, a week ago, was past Friday, and, and talked to the fellow that we've arrested, and we're, we're walking him back into the, to the police car, you know.
And the why, right?
The, the always question is why? Well, he has the furniture to move, found a truck, it's unlocked, had the keys in it, figured that was a good one to take. So, you know, um, as much as we're trying to, to be proactive and, and implement things to, to reduce this from happening, uh, we need the public's help. So, uh, I'll leave that with that. It seems to be a constant thing, I know I've said this many times during those reports, but people are still, again, not securing their vehicles and wonder why they're, they're not there when they go looking for them. Over the summer, we've seen a number of drug-related overdoses in our community. You know, we've saved a lot more than we've lost. Uh, and aside from what EHS does for the community, uh, our members on two occasions now have gone and found unresponsive people and have brought them back using a combination of CPR and, and Loxone. We're getting drug, uh, lab reports back now, uh, just confirming what we suspected, that carfentanil and fentanyl, you know, is in our community, are in our community. I guess it's proper English. So, people need to be aware of, if they're in that lifestyle and they're, and they're, and they're, you know, doing things that, they gotta be aware of the dangers out there. Because, uh, although a large number of them are saved, I, I wouldn't wanna take that risk. So. I guess, any questions?
So I've, I've seen in the news, um, recently that, um, some of these dealers that are dealing, um, drugs that have, uh, fentanyl or carfentanil in them are being brought up on charges, manslaughter, et cetera, et cetera. Um, will that be happening in Dawson? Should we, um, apprehend a dealer that is, um, involved with, uh, drug overdoses resulting in death? Will we?
You know, anytime a dealer is arrested, and if we can, if we can connect the dots and, and satisfy every element of the offense, a charge will be submitted to Crown. It's just, uh, you know, once we get the information, I will forward it, but we need to satisfy all elements before a charge can be approved, so.
Someone else have any questions? Well, thank you, and, um, you guys are doing a great job, and, and thank you to all those that went down and helped with the fires, 'cause that was a very precedent, precedent situation in the province, so.
I'll pass it along, thank you.
Thank you, all right. Right, next is the report from Director of Corporate Administration.
Good morning. I'll just highlight a couple of items in my report. First thing, uh, with regards to the filing system. Um, we did do, uh, we had a consultant come and meet with all of our department heads and, and, uh, had a look at all our filing systems all throughout the city. And, uh, he's gone back, and he's gonna be coming back with a recommendation, November, December, on how we can move forward with this, and, uh, hopefully in time for budget discussions, so we can include some funding in there. 'Cause I'm sure something will be needed moving forward. And, uh, we are going to be purging quite a bit, 'cause we are hoarding a little bit more than we need to, so it'll be nice to clean out some things that, um, we're gonna be updating our, um, file retention bylaw, and then that will help us with that task. Um, I'm sure that, uh, Barry, oh, Shante is gonna be reporting on the World Hockey Challenge, so I'll leave that to her.
Barry's connected.
Oh, Barry's going to, okay. Um, kindness meters, uh, we do have, uh, various locations around the community with kindness meters. Um, there's still quite a bit of funding remaining in that, so if, um, any members of the community or, um, want to put their change into those meters, um, there's matching funding there, still available. And, um, the organizations getting funding this period is Special Olympic PC and Step Up and Ride, so if you wanna support that, just put your coins into those meters. On time capsule opening, uh, we did have the opening on July 1st at the Pioneer Village, and, um, at this point, we're gathering items for the new time capsule, so if I could have all of Counsel just respond to Lindsay on any ideas that you'd like to put into the new time capsule, um, in the short term, then, um, early December, I think we're going to be putting those items into the capsule and then having a little ceremony at the Calvin Kirk Center. So that's pretty cool. Excuse me. Um, community awards, uh, today is the deadline for nominations. Uh, we've only got six nominations received so far, so if you wanna use your contacts and just spread the word, uh, to get those nominations in by the end of the day, and then we'll, um, open the voting in, within a week or so. And, uh, we've been doing quite a bit of training in our department through the summer, so, um, the girls have been traveling around, gaining knowledge. Um, we've got, uh, emergency, um, ESS director training, and that's basically with communication, so that'll help with communication efforts for our next emergency. Um, Sabrina's working on that. Um, Elisa's attended Maddie Foundation's, which is just an overall, um, what happens with local government. It's a really good beginner course. Cindy went on the Corporate Officers Conference and brought back a bunch of knowledge with that one. Bunch of to-dos. And, um, over the summer, I'll wind up with, um, Kelsey Bates's left, which is sad for us, 'cause she was a really good fit with the community, but, or with our, with our, um, department. But we do have Tab Young, and, um, she's been helping us out over the last couple of weeks, and she's really a good fit, and I'm happy to say that, um, we've hired her on as permanent staff, and so we look forward to working with her. And that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Any questions? Counsel, uh, Parcel?
Concerning the filing system, um, is, uh, are you exploring the interface between the city's penchant for collecting things and the role of the new archivist? Are you aware that Peace River and Grand Prairie both have, and many other smaller, you know, regional areas have, uh, contracts with the, uh, archives in Grand Prairie and Peace River, and they do a lot of their, their work? So, I hope the consultant's aware of, out of new capacity there.
Yeah, we will, we'll make sure that he's aware, and that he includes that in his report.
And please don't throw out anything that might be useful to the archivists.
I'm one of those hoarders, so.
Well, I was thinking, you know, who, you didn't name who the hoarders are, so I immediately thought of Shante, actually.
We are hoarders.
Yes.
There's no problem of anything not being.
They're citywide, but there's a few. Cindy will help us out with that, 'cause she's, she's pretty good at purging, so.
So you need to talk to Cindy afterwards, Counsel Parcel, 'cause she's the purger.
Yeah.
I never thought she would be a hoarder.
No, she's not a hoarder, she's the purger.
Oh, sorry, I missed her there. Good for Cindy.
She's gonna help.
Thank you, Brenda.
Okay, so at fifteen point three, we have, uh, the report from our Chief Financial Officer.
Perfect. Well, first of all, I'm really excited to be here, and I thank you all for the opportunity. What has started already, as you saw from my budget assumption report, is I'm getting the ball rolling on the budget. Department managers must submit their budget for 2018 by November 15th, and their capital portion of that budget by November 30th. My goal is to have some sort of preliminary budget early in the new year. And, um, the next thing I'm here to work on is the audit. And right now, we have Sandra Rose Bonegrindl, our auditors, working this week downstairs, and they're doing the interim audit, which means they are testing our internal controls, our financial internal controls, to ensure that we reduce all risks possible for things to go sideways before they even get the ability to, and they test it on an annual basis. Uh, things I wanna work on in the financial department are finding areas of efficiency. There's always ways things can be done, different, better, more effective, and I wanna explore that. And finally, I'm sad that Shelley's gone, but she will be available to me when I have questions, and she's gonna be working on special projects going forward, so I feel like I still have support. And that's my report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Adam? Well, welcome, Adam, we're glad you're here, and you have definitely put both feet in there and, and are going, so thank you very much. All right, moving along, uh, fifteen four, we have our report from the General Manager of Community Services, Duncan?
Yeah, so through you, Madam Chair, just before, uh, Community Services gets going, um, as we move through that budget process, uh, if Counsel has any capital projects that intend to bring forward, uh, the more lead time we have on those projec, projects, the, the more opportunity to get accurate pricing and, and include those within the budget and see how they fit. So, if Counsel, uh, has some ideas, um, they need to be passed through resolution, um, but through that new counselor business that can come forward, or through the budget process.
Okay. So would you like us to have that input before the next meeting?
It's entirely up to Counsel, uh, but the more lead time, the, the better. Um, and, and there's a couple different avenues to do that. But just, I just wanna kinda get Counsel thinking about that. If there are some special projects that you have in mind, um, we, we, the sooner we see them, the better.
Counsel Rogers and Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, so part of the budget assumptions, from what I just heard, is, um, is staff will be putting forward, um, budgeted amounts that, um, that they're gonna require for operating their departments, et cetera?
So it's, so through you, Madam Chair, uh, similar process to, to previous years, where we bring forward a budget, operational plan, and a capital plan, and, and those services that are required.
So, um, would we be able to, through this call meeting, be able to find out roughly what staff is thinking about putting into, say, roads, for instance, how much they would be thinking of putting into roads for 2018?
Yeah, so we're not, we're not that far ahead in the budget process. Um, and I would encourage Counsel not to make any decisions regarding a particular capital project until you can see that within the, the, uh, list of all other projects and, and what we're bringing forward. It's just more of a trigger if there's something that will come forward, sometimes things do, uh, just to start thinking about that.
Counselor Schuman? So, of course, I will be bringing forward curbside recycling again. I'm not gonna give up. So, when does that come forward? Like, when should I do that?
Uh, so things have come forward throughout the year. Uh, the potable water at the RV station was one of them. It was gonna be referred to 2018. We provided a report where it was able to be completed sooner. Those have come forward throughout the year. There's some other projects that have been directed to be included in the budget. Uh, so you could bring that forward through New Counselor Business Resolution to be included in 2018 budget, and we can begin working on that, provided that you get the support.
So perhaps that we could wrap our heads around that and have it ready for, uh, the next council meeting under New Counselor Business, those items that we would like to put forward, which would still work with the timeline that staff's working under November 15th and November 30th, right? that staff's working under November 15th and November 30th, right? Good? All right. Welcome.
Sorry.
No, no, that's good. All right, please.
I'm just helping Barry over the next six weeks as he's doing the U-17. So I'll be presenting the Cow. And then we're just going to do a highlight of our departments large. And so we're going to do a highlight, and we have Bob Fullton from the fire department going to give an update on the training center with our Cow. So we'll start with him.
Perfect.
So Training Center is actually in operation. We've actually put a fair bit of time in training within the building. We recently got it to a point where we could actually conduct live fires inside the building. And we've run a number of live fires in there to see what capabilities are. We trained some of our firefighters, majority of our firefighters, on instruction and tech to actually how to set the fires without killing people. And we actually had the Justice Institute at BC send a representative up to view our site. And while he would not specifically say that we can be designated as a remote campus for the Justice Institute, for the Fire and Safety Division, he did say that we are, this, structure of ours, this site of ours, is probably one of the best in BC that he's seen. He wouldn't, like I say, he wouldn't specifically say what his recommendations would be, but he was very impressed. The instructor that came up for the, to provide the training for our guys was quite impressed with the capacity and the capabilities of our people in, you know, conducting live fire drills, live fire training, and so on. So there's still some, we're still working on the basis of it, but it's, like I say, it's still a work in progress, and it's coming along quite well. Guys are, guys are quite pleased at what they're able to do, and they're quite, quite excited.
Awesome, great. Does anyone have any questions, Counselor Rogers?
Yeah, I've got one. Thank you. The, so you, are we bringing in trainers to train our members?
We have brought, we have brought one person in that has run a training center.
Yeah.
So it's a little over and above what our guys would normally do. Like, yeah, they're, they're well-qualified firefighters, and they can go deal with fires, but to teach somebody else, that's another, another step above. So you have to, you know, as I've always told people, yeah, you've taken the training, you know this stuff, but if you really want to know this stuff, teach it. So that's where they're stepping in going, okay, we understand. And setting practice fires is a very, very dangerous, but also very technical operation. And it has to be done to meet the standard NFA has set. And so our guys are starting to recognize that, you know, this is what we have to do, and we have to maintain control of the fires so that the people that are being trained are not being overtaxed, and we're not going to get somebody hurt. It's a training, training event, training endeavor, and we want to make sure that they get the training, but they also recognize that they're probably working their, the limits of their abilities. So we take them to that level and say, okay, in a real-life situation, here's what you can do, and recognize that you can't go too much above that.
Okay. So we're not sending our firemen out for training anymore? We're bringing people to train our?
For the most part, yes. We'll be bringing, bringing people to increase our, our guys' knowledge and skills. There will still be some, some courses that we'll have to go out for, but for the most part, we're doing a lot of our, you know, the hands-on, basic, basic training will be done here. And then we'll also be able to pass that on to neighboring departments. We've already had a number of departments that have expressed a very strong interest in, in using our facility. And I just want to make sure that we've covered all the bases before we send somebody out there to train.
We will be able to instruct. In our fees and charges model, we have instruction, safety, and attack. We will be able to provide that service, just not in all areas just yet.
Yeah. So we're just getting the training for the training?
Training for the trainers, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Also, the center's been used by the RCMP as also this past month, right?
Yeah. This, this facility initially was thought of, okay, we'll just teach firefighters. But the more we looked at it, the more offered it to other agencies, say, what can you use this for? And the RCMP has stepped in, and they've done about 10 to 12 hours training in there on some different aspects of their, you know, their training and skills. And they're in, they really appreciate the opportunity and really enjoyed the trainings.
Yeah, I always thought that there was a great opportunity with the fire training center to help train, like, oil and gas workers and just.
Yeah, there's, there's been a few things brought up about, you know, that kind of potential. But also, we don't, also don't want to put the city on the hook for providing the props and things. But if, you know, these opportunities appear, and some people are willing to step up, that's something we would surely consider.
Yeah, I find industries always willing to help out.
Yeah.
We've also, and Bob, maybe you can talk a little bit about reaching out to the other fire departments in the, in the region and just letting them know that it's available?
Yeah. Yeah, like I say, there's a number of them. The, the objective for this would be for them to reach, be able to be certified. And that's where the Justice Institute comes in. If they accredit us as a, an accredited site, our people will be able to sign off and say, yeah, they've met, met the requirements. And then the JI will, will give them their certificate to the, the industry standard. So that's a, that's a big step. You used to have to go to either Fort St. James or Maple Ridge to get this training. So it's a, it's a big step. Perfect.
Let's hear it, Duncan.
So the only other piece that I'd like to draw attention to in this is regarding the South Peace Search and Rescue. This was something council asked us to look at, how we could include them in our program. And so there is a section in the report that addresses how we're already using them, also including them in the feasibility study for emergency response. And so there's a few areas in there addressed.
It's always a great opportunity to bridge our services if we can. Perfect.
So with regards to search and rescue, they've, they've made an offer, but also from the city's standpoint, we have to say, okay, what are they capable of? And we don't want to get them into trouble. So they've, they've given us some information as to what their, their capabilities are. And it's been, it's noted in the report that, yes, there are times when we could use them. If it really gets bad, you know, if we get a really major, heavy-duty situation, they're there. We need to just, again, note their limitations and make sure that we're not putting them into anything, any more harm's way than we absolutely have to.
That's completely understandable, but it is great to have it there, and it's great to see that the Training Center is becoming what it is. Because I do know many smaller fire departments have come up here for other courses. So to, to hopefully take it to that next level, we'll just open up more opportunities for those people. Great, thank you. Shante?
Thank you. So we'll just do a few little highlights. So we do, we have a new rep software that's coming in, so we'll be working with that for about the next six to eight months to switch over our system. So we're very excited about that. Anna's starting to work with Legend, and we'll get a timeline together within the next few weeks. You guys are aware that the, one of the highlights this summer was going to the parade and the city getting first. So the staff was very excited about that. Right now, it's Healthy Work Month, please. So we're working with all the staff, and there's Jersey Day every Friday, and we're taking pictures. There's free opportunity to try out the recreation activities within the city of Dawson Creek. So staff are going, Jen went around to all of the sites individually and met up with them. So a lot more passes going out. So we're excited about that decorating for Halloween, and then there will be pizza and staff appreciation the last week in August. We also are just hosted the 10th anniversary at the Camborg Aquatic Center. So we had 329 Tunis swimmers. We had a fair amount of people coming and enjoying the bouncy castle because we wanted to have some free activities as well. So that was a, a great celebration for staff. And then we don't forget in the report that our attendance was up this summer, a lot due with the weather and with no outdoor swimming activities. So we're over a million customers, and thirty million and thirty-three thousand customers until September 30th. So we're excited about that and continue on, we're working on our targets, getting our targets going. And then the parks, they completed the BC Hydro Garden, the Trencher Garden at the Hennery Park, and tree planting in Newby Park. And then the curling rink, I'm sure got updated about that, but if you want more information, I can pass it on to Levi if you'd like to have an update on the curling rink.
I have some questions.
Counselor Parcel?
Shante?
Yes, sir.
I made a statement last night, and I was challenged about it. You know, it's the interface between city and rural residents. And I said that we know the users of our facilities, and that a significant percentage of the users of our facilities are rural residents. Question I was asked, which I could give a partial answer to, but there's one or two things I couldn't give an answer to. Let's take swimming. How do you know when someone presents themselves at the ticket counter there whether they're a rural resident or a city resident?
So through your worship. Worship, if they are in our system, we have their address, so we know that information. But if they're just a drop-in person at this point, we necessarily wouldn't know unless we had that communication or we knew them. So that's how we would determine if they were. But if they're in the system, everyone that has an account, we have all their address so we can see if they're rural or non-rural. The system in itself, if we do decide to go city or rural, we can go into that and set up accounts for everybody. There is a capability in the system and in the new system as well. But at present time, if they're not in the system.
So the figures that we receive from staff about that do not include the, those people who are not in the system at the swimming pool?
That is correct.
But for sports such as hockey, they're all registered?
So through your worship, with the hockey, well, what happens is, is hockey would have account their, their registration, so they would be able to give us who is rural, who is not rural. Same with figure skating through their membership. When we rent ice to hockey and figure skating, we're just renting the lump sum of ice to them, so we're renting to that organization.
Yeah, okay. Now, Fort St. John is undergoing a review of its recreation programs. Are you aware of what the process, what process they're following? Is there something that we can replicate or piggyback on there?
On November 22nd, we are actually meeting with Fort St. John just to review some programming and doing a program development with them as well. Because we just, we just hosted in our region, and our other BC Recreation Association had 25 practitioners here. So we are working with them. We're also undergoing our recreation, our process with the delivery system that we're offering as well. And that was with Erin Oliver. Now, as the Leisure Service and Wellness Coordinator, so we are starting to do focus groups as well with teens. We already hosted one with seniors at the conference. So we are doing some focus groups too to determine what we need to do. So over the next six months, we'll hopefully have some more ideas of what the community would like us to see.
Okay, is their, their post-surfers received some fair coverage? And the last thing isn't really directed to you, there's a guy sitting behind you that I think it's directed to, but I'll go through you, Shante. You can pass it on to him. You recall that last time we, we met, I think you were here? I asked if you had looked at the Grand Prairie system at their East Link Swimming Sports Complex, where they issued day passes? And I believe it was Barry said he was going to get back to council about that. So I was wondering if there's any getting back going to happen at this meeting?
Shante, the answer would be apologize, no. So I'll make sure that Shante gets that. Must have fell through the grime for apologizing. But you're just looking for this specific day pass option, correct?
We, we didn't have, I remarked that we didn't have it as an option. Why didn't we have it? Had you looked at how they did it at East, at East Link? Because I know, because I've used it, it's a very handy thing to have when you've got grandchildren in tow shopping. So I do believe people come here from rural areas in Chapewin, Tumbler Ridge to do the shopping. It might be a nice, nice thing we can offer. And it wasn't just doubling the price. It was, it's a, theirs is, it's, well, it's a year since I've used it, but it's seven dollars a day.
So we've, we've included something in our fees and charges that was recently passed by council. Council supported the fees and charges bylaw.
The charge here, counsel.
That's, that's the fee set.
I believe it carried, though, so that's.
Yeah, it did carry. So there is a fee in there. We're always reviewing, and if there's some good information to be had from Grand Prairie, we'll take a look at it. Council hasn't given us any direction to go in there and provide a report, but we're happy to provide some information, the committee, the whole, how they do their, their items.
They don't need a report. It's the information, how can they manage you for seven dollars where you guys won it eleven something? And it was that eleven something that precipitated my question.
And it's, it's possible that with Grand Prairie's changes in their operating hours because of their shortage in staff, they've had to provide that to accommodate some of those disruptions, possibly.
Possibly. All right.
Okay.
Moving along.
So if there's no more questions with the report, just before we move on to Barry with updated U-17, Deputy Fire Chief has a few things that he would like to bring up.
So you, you've got the media day report in front of you for what happened, you know, during the summer. But also during the summer, a few things have happened that didn't make the report. For starters, the, you may not have heard that the firefighters have actually put together a charitable society so that they can focus any, any of their spare time and charitable activities back into the city and maintain, you know, giving out receipts, charitable receipts, and so on. So just as a, just to give you a bit of an idea, in June, they donated a thousand dollars to Step Up and Ride. In July, to do with the BC wildfire relief, they, they collected $10,370 that went to the Salvation Army. In August, they got together with the South Peace Child Resource and Referral Center, and they raised $800 worth of school supplies. So that was enough for 15 children, you know, to restart their schooling. And then Crescent Park Home Elementary, Crescent Park Elementary Home Reading Rewards Program, they, in September, they put, got a, got a hold of a, or $500 towards that. So the, the firefighters not only doing their regular jobs, but they're out trying to better the community. Brenda was talking about the EM, Emergency Management Training that has been going on. And to just give you an idea why it's important, staff from within the city supported the evacuees out of Williams Lake and that region, put in several hours, and several being a very small number compared to what they actually put in the effort. But they provided ESS support to get housing and, you know, help people manage being away from their homes for, I think it was two or three weeks, that they were extremely busy. And then our firefighters, we actually sent a crew down to Kelowna to provide structural fire support if needed. We just, just happened to be in a position where they were ready to go, and just before they were about to deploy, be deployed, everything got cut back. They managed to get control of the fires, so our guys came back. But it was an interesting experience for them. And then in the next report from, the Cow report, you'll probably hear about Fire Prevention Week, but I just thought I'd mention it since it's just passed. The firefighters went to all the schools, all the, all the elementary schools, and provided training and such to the students. And then they're working on the Chief of, Chief for a Day program that we'll be hearing more about in, at the next meeting. Other than that, good job.
Go the way for Barry. Good morning.
So before I start, was there any other questions about the Curling Club?
I think so. I think it's moving along, is it not?
Yeah. No, so the report there, but everything's good, move along. So today, I wanted to, we're releasing both today in Fort St. John at both councils, the update on the development opportunities. A lot of work has gone into, by the committee on this, this time, because we did have a little more time to prepare and work with our associations. Part of the legacy associated with hosting of the event, a number of our partnerships with local associations and regional minor hockey associations have come into play. We believe that over 700 kids, coaches, and parents will participate in the development opportunity this coming event. Now, we talked a little bit about We Are Coaches, which we completed already. That was the female coach program. And 16 girls in her coaching. We will have another Coach One that will involve coaches as far as Fort Nelson and the other side of the bridge in Fort St. John. The Female Hockey Jamboree is a continuation of some of the legacy that goes back to 2012. Becky Keller-Duke will be in town, a four-time Olympian, working with our young girls, and very excited about that. And the uniqueness about that is that the girls that took the Coach Clinic are participating in that to help on-ice instruction. It'll be the first time that they'll be putting their feedback back into girls' development programming. Initiation Program, Cross Ice Hockey with the Novice, is probably going to be the biggest event in regards to participation. Both arenas in Fort St. John will be utilized for that event. We believe over 400 kids will participate in the day and a half of activities. We'll be also doing parent education and Coach One seminars. We have a number of expert people in town. Paul Carson from Hockey Canada is the number-one development person in Canada. Joe Drago will be back in helping us as well as Randy Henderson. A number of staff will be here from BC Hockey, up to eight staff from BC Hockey will be in. And there will also be a recorder coming in from Hockey Canada to basically capture most of the activities throughout the weekend. The Dreams Come True is probably going to be the very special one. That is geared to the low-income families. We'll be bringing 23 kids into the program that have never, ever been able to put on a skate, and that is fully supported by Hockey Canada, which is, when you see these kids, and I think Shante was part of the process of outfitting those kids down at the local Canadian Tire store, to see the smiles on her face this weekend, came down to the arena to be outfitted. Boston Pizza sponsoring their tracksuit or jacket this year. Those kids are extremely happy, and it's really unique in both communities how they provide a learn-to-play program that will ensure that those kids get every opportunity to be successful in our programs. We have a goalie, goalie coaching clinics, we have officiating clinics and hot stove sessions. And also unique is that we also have teams in from Fort Smith and Hay River this coming up activity weekend, and they're doing an exchange with our Minor Hockey Kids, and there's been sponsorship money put into a barbecue and the hosting of those kids into our community, which I think is quite unique as well. We also have a very unique partnership with the Alberta side and the Palm Ray Sports and supporting of basically a BOGO ticket, as Ryan would say it, buy one, get one free. And every individual that participates in the development program on the coming weekend receives a free ticket to a game in both Dawson Creek or Fort St. John, which is quite unique as well. The interesting part is that I'll wrap up with the human capital and the financial side of this event is $100,000. And basically, the only two that require some form of fee is the jamboree, which goes back, all back into female development for our girls, and the hosting of the event in Fort St. John of the Cross Ice Half Ice, which is really only $75 a team, guaranteeing all those kids three games and a lot of activity for parents. Of that human capital side, the financial side is just under $75,000. The rest is all volunteer time put in by minor hockey associations and parents making sure the delivery of those programs happen. Of that largest chunk comes under We Are Coaches, Dreams Come True, and the Hockey Canada staff initiatives are close to $40,000. It's all paid by Hockey Canada. And BC Hockey is covering the rest of the jamboree costs and they're staffing a model coming in. The remainder is being covered by the legacy side. Any shortfall will be taken out of the legacy funding. And sponsorship is also from Dawson Creek Minor Hockey and Fort St. John Minor Hockey. So we're quite excited, rolling this back out. It's been exciting so far, and we're really looking forward to the fact that in one day, all four arenas in both Dawson Creek and Fort St. John will be utilized right up until game time on Sunday, and that every child in the region, we hope, has that opportunity through their minor hockey association if they're not playing, that their own leagues and games are traveling, that they'll be with us on that weekend. Any questions of the development side?
I want to say thank you to all the organizers and volunteers that it takes to put this on, but I appreciate everything that you've said, Barry, because I don't think the community really understands the true ripple effects of hosting U-17 and the benefits to the community and to our coaches and our youth. And so, long after that last game, there's huge ripples that go throughout the community and throughout Northeast BC. So for me, thank you to everyone that has put it on and put that application together to host it and doing what has to be done to get it finished, because it's just an excellent opportunity that you very rarely see in the North. So good on all of you for what you do.
Okay, any other questions?
Anyone have any questions for Barry?
You said it all.
I said it all?
Good job.
Good job.
Nice time, yeah. It was a purple day today. And wouldn't be amiss if we didn't bring from our department, it was a tough week last week with pneumonia and furny, and we're thinking of them and our staff. So thank you to council that reached out. Very important that we recognize the furny incident and how they're going through that. So I know our staff, Levi and Shante, did a great job in circling back with our staff and some of the things that happened, ensuring that we have a safe environment for all of our kids and families in the arena. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so 15.5 is a report from our General Manager of Development Services regarding development services. Welcome, Kevin.
Good morning. As you'll note, I've only got about 75 pages to go through.
For information?
As one of my former colleagues once said, Mr. Machado, he says, "I don't have time to go through all of them," and then he started at the beginning and he went through every one of them. I won't do that. What I'm going to do is I'm going to just combine everything, and I'm just going to hit some highlights as there is a lot of information. Hopefully hit things that are of interest to council. So I'm going to start with capital projects that are underway. Seventh Street and 122 Avenue Drainage Project was supposed to be done last year, was on hold due to some tellus infrastructure that needed to be relocated. That work has just been completed in the last couple of weeks. So at this point, I believe we probably will not put the drainage works in this fall still just due to time of year, also U-17s and a number of things down in that area, just conflicts. So most likely, that will be finished up in the spring of '18. Drainage Master Plan, just reviewed a draft here about a month ago. They're just finalizing that work, and we will have a completed master plan that looks all at the drainage network for the city, mains, catch basins, all that work, culverts. And out of that will be some recommendations for capital planning moving forward, and as we find with every master plan, that there's usually some work to be done there. So there'll be some recommendations for funding allocations into the future. Trucked Waste Handling Facility is moving along, anticipated opening up in the spring. Still waiting on some long delivery items that need to go in the building, so that's really what, that's taking the time, but project's moving along. Everything's fine. RV Sandy Dump, we chatted a little bit earlier in council about that. So the potable water that will be installed, just a couple of simple stand pipes, that'll be available for RV users. As mentioned, it's metered, it's just not charged. That work will be completed in the spring. Raw Water Reservoir, that project's nearing completion, spreading topsoil. That should almost be complete on the banks. They're looking at starting the fence installation, and they have to do a tie-in to the existing raw water line that runs by there. But by the end of this month, everything's going to be very close to being complete. So for those of you that have not been out there, it is a pretty impressive piece of infrastructure that we're going to have available to us into the future. It's a local contractor, NOS, did a great job keeping the project on time due to the weather they had starting the season, it was very wet. So all in all, great project. We will look to start filling that reservoir in the spring. We don't have enough time this year to get enough water in it to protect the piping and infrastructure from freezing. So just by nature of the size of it, it's going to take probably three to four months just to get enough water in there to cover the pipes. So that'll start in the spring. It'll take approximately 500 days to fill, maybe a little bit less, but it's a big piece 10th Street Bridge, so a little bit behind schedule just due to some delays on delivery of the bridge girders. So that set everything a little bit farther back, but right now, the plan is to pour concrete tomorrow, but we are having a conference call later today. The weather doesn't look great for tomorrow, so that may change a little bit. But plan is to pour the bridge deck and the abutments, and once that's done, then probably by the end of the week, into the weekend, if all things being considered, they'd start backfilling on each side of the bridge and completing the road base, and things will be coming along. So let's hope for some good weather. But right now, I think the forecast for tomorrow is about an inch of rain, so that might slow things down.
That concrete's got to cure for 28 days anyway.
Yeah, I mean, the concrete's going to have high strength and an accelerator in there, so after about seven days, they'll be able to start backfilling on the abutments. Water Treatment Plant Expansion and Upgrades, I had brought a report to council, I believe it was in probably September, where we had tendered the work. We'd only received one bid on the upgrade work, and it was significantly over budget, so we had canceled the project at that point in time. We're doing a bit of redesign and we'll be re-tendering hopefully in January, hoping for a little better time of year and a little more interest, and that will provide better pricing, we hope, for us. So that work is to improve the filtration and capacity and add about 50% over and above what we've got right now. So that will be good. The Treated Water Reservoir that's at the Water Treatment Plant is complete and commissioned and working well. So that has given us about 4,000 cubic meters, which is about a little better than half a day's worth of storage. At the Water Treatment Plant, provides a really nice buffer between the treatment plant and the community and just how that plant has to operate to meet the demands, as well as provides fire storage specifically for the south part of town. It's got increased pumping capacity, which now allows us to fill Park Hill, Loren Reservoirs, even during our high-demand times, where before, we could never do that. So it's just provided a whole gamut of extra capacity and opportunities for us that we didn't have, so that's been a great addition as well. And I think that's it for projects that come to mind. Like you said, the report's long, but if there's any questions specific to the report, I'll do my best to answer those questions, so.
Does anyone have any questions for Kevin? Counselor Jankov?
I'll ask this one. I don't know if this is the right time or not.
Sure.
You can tell me if it is. The flood mitigation contractor, are they here or are they working?
Yep, so thanks for bringing that up. That's, Alex was in touch with them last week. They're putting together a bit of a consultation plan and what that'll look like. So what we've articulated to them is that we want them to reach out and provide opportunity for all those people that were affected and try and come up with how they can get that feedback and that input, because I think it's very important to engage the citizens that were affected and just, because everyone might be a bit unique and just, and feed into that process, which will help as far as develop the mitigation strategies. So yeah, it's underway.
Just one other question, and it's sort of related to the water. There was some discussion about the issues with the Alaska Highway Truck Filling Station regarding pipes that were put in by the US Army. So I was just wondering, is there a plan in place to replace those, or obviously, they're pretty old. I don't know what they're made of. Are they, you know, cast iron or...
So the ones that come from, the one line from the treatment plant that comes over to the Alaska Highway Booster is a concrete pipe that was put in, I believe it was in the late 50s, early 60s is when that line was put in. We've recently done some work out at the treatment plant, and so the pipe visually looks like it's in fairly good shape, doesn't have a lot of buildup on the inside, as well as we're going to take samples and pieces of that pipe, and you're able to send that out and get it analyzed to see structurally if it's, just as a representation, to see if structurally it's still in good shape. So in the short term, we don't have that pipe identified to be replaced, and when I say that, in the five-year plan. But we are doing some more work to see if that needs to be bumped up or at least into the longer-range plan. We're also looking at for 2018 to do some analyzing of not only that line with what they call smart ball technology, where you can actually put a small device into the line on one end and capture it on another end, and it analyzes the pipe for leaks and any deficiencies within that. We're looking to do that with that line that I just spoke of, as well as the raw water line from Hart Reservoirs to the new reservoir. Again, just to get a better indicator of where we're at, so we can plan in the future. Obviously, those lines are fairly critical to our whole operation of providing water to towns, so we need to know. So, yeah.
What did you call that device?
They call it a smart ball, I believe is what I was told, smart ball, and it's just a small...
Sounds like the smart pigs they threw through the oil and gas line.
Yeah.
Tell us a part of it.
Similar idea.
Well, I was going to ask this question around turbidity, but I'm not sure if it's the same question that my colleague asked, because what I read was, I think it was staff source, it was, well, it was a...
Around that line?
American, yeah. I don't know. It was to do with the turbidity and waterline to some residents in the community.
Yes, we did have some turbidity.
Is that linked to the same topic that Counselor Javectra?
Yeah.
So it wasn't American forces that put that pipeline in then?
It was later, because when I went back and looked at the actual date of installation on that pipe, it is after, obviously, when the Army was here. So the turbidity issues that occurred earlier in the year, we've corrected and found the source, and that goes back to, we had a leak at one of the vaults at the Water Treatment Plant. So that was creating some stir in the water, and so that's some of the work that we just completed here recently, so we were able to narrow that down. That's not to say that that line doesn't need to be pegged, but we believe now that we flushed it and done a few things, that it's not as bad as what we once thought. So again, this smart ball technology that we can put in there, we believe will certainly give us a better indicator of what the inside of the pipe looks like.
It was also the commissioning of them new pumps that went in up there, because we doubled the capacity on that stream.
Number of things all at once that, you know, created a few issues, but overall, we've chipped away at pretty much all of them, and we're in a pretty good spot now.
It's just like in anybody's house, you shut your water off, you turn it back on again, and things in your own pipes get stirred up. Staff did a good job working through it, I think.
So did we just do a combination of development?
Everything, yeah. I'm just lumping it all together.
Okay, so where's that at? So I just want to note then, Ted Pringle, so can you tell us a little bit?
So Mr. Pringle is a Level 3 Building Inspector that works for the Peace River Regional District, and is part of the agreement that we have with the Regional District to provide shared services. Ted comes to the city Monday, Wednesdays, and half of Fridays every week and provides that level of building inspection that we haven't had and that we will need into the future, as we've talked about with the new Building Act coming in. Aside from that, he's provided some great insight into a few things and some mentorship for Bill, our Building Inspector, so it's been great. Great to have him.
All right. Anyone else have any other... Does anyone else have any other questions for Kevin? Good, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
All right, so now we have 15.7, a report from our airport manager.
So, I'll introduce.
Welcome, Patrick.
Patrick Sehoda is our airport manager. We still work with Tagus Management and Patrick's come in replacing Ian. Ian has moved on to a special project and Patrick is, comes to us from YVR, Patrick?
Yes.
And he's our new airport manager.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so, thanks.
I did not know this.
So, I'll be introducing myself first before I get into the report. So, I came from YVR, I graduated from BCIT with aviation management and airport operations. I graduated in 2015, I got two years' experience in YVR before life ended up moving out here. So, I do have vast knowledge and lots of resources that I can rely on doing this job. Aviation's been my passion for quite a while now. So, that's something that I actually was interested in in high school and so Ian, now I ended up here. So, we'll get into the report and we'll hold questions till the end. So, our departmental focus is continuously being the same, to provide a safe and secure airport for the traveling public, corporate medevac and general aviation. Some of our strategic priorities right now, so we got successful funding from ACAP for plow trucks, sweeper, runway condition reporting system and grader. Our plow truck is estimated to arrive in January of 2018. We proposed it to be in November of this year, but due to getting in the order a little late and some time restraints and as well as it takes two separate companies to actually build that truck, so it does take a little bit of time, so we'll be getting it in January. Our runway condition reporting system is estimated to arrive in November. That is through Trade Wind, it's an updated system of what we currently have, it's a little bit more accurate and the bugs that we currently experiencing with our system right now will be fixed. With the grader, we were one of the first airports across Canada to get awarded ACAP funding for a grader, which is really, really something to be proud of. Committee that we currently stand on, the RCAC, helped change the ACAP program to now include graders, which is a great thing for us. Moving on to the operational strategies, so regulated by Transport Canada, we have SMS system. They have given us four goals that we have to develop on throughout the year. The first one is to develop standard operating procedures. We've had none implemented so far. We've had a couple incidents where our staff did respond efficiently and that was because of the previous SOPs that were implemented. So, kudos to Ian for doing so. We also have to respond to Canadian Aviation Daily Occurrence Reporting System. So, we did have one incident where Orca Airways was on final approach and there was a flock of seagulls where they would be touching down. Staff was on it right away, they noticed it, they took the initiative and they cleared the seagulls. However, Orca Airways decided to change their approach from 06 to 24. That's something that is responded in the Canadian Aviation Daily Occurrence Reporting System. I commend staff on taking that initiative and making sure that those seagulls were cleared. They've been trained very well by Ian, knowing the repercussions of something that could happen when it comes to wildlife and aircraft in the same vicinity. So, kudos to him on that. Training, so Transport has specific requirements for management and staff. Two of our maintenance staff just finished up their WAMSCAR course in Prince George, so they're certified for that now and able to do proper condition reports for winter. Transport Canada is undergoing a whole revamp of that whole reporting system now. So, they are now going to a more global format that this would be reported in. So, that will be implemented in 2020 is what they are expecting. So, we are slowly getting our guys used to implementing this new system. Transport Canada has given us a heads up to slowly get this into play. So, our guys are on top of that right now. Active area incursions, we've had none so far, but, well, that was when I wrote this report. So, last week there was a deer on our runway, we got it cleared out within half an hour. We've been very proactive in not letting any wildlife feel welcomed at the airport and staff have remained diligent and the main thing I stress upon them is just to not get complacent at this time. They understand, they know the repercussions and they're starting to take a lot of initiative in making sure this doesn't happen. Some other information, so CMA is continuously providing service with their Beech 1900s and Dornier 328s. As you might know, they have changed their flight schedule to provide a direct flight to Prince George rather than Vancouver right now. Integra Air has started service to Dawson Creek with their Beech Kengairs and Jetstream 31s. Over the last month, we've seen their numbers rise and the numbers are very strong and as the word gets out, we expect it to get better. Another thing I wanna touch upon is we are currently developing a marketing plan to get the word out about the new flights that we have and the existing flights. We're hoping to use some of the grand money that we could possibly apply for to build our social media and online presence, because we've had, to this day, we go more traditional in a sense when it comes to marketing and I wanna kind of move us towards newer generation of marketing, which is online, digital marketing, digital media and things like that. So, that's something exciting that we can get the word out more about the airport and create more brand awareness of us. Moving on, charter aircraft are in and out of Dawson Creek, they continue to stay busy. Sunwest is in daily and there's been a number of times, probably at least once a week, where they come in at least twice a day. So, they're making sure we stay busy as well. So, the airport plays a vital role in the health of our public. As you know, we do constant medevacs, one day we've had at least four in a day. We need to at least make sure that they can continuously get in during the winter to service our region and provide our community with the medical services they need. So, let's talk numbers, passenger numbers today are 8,752, they are down 1,212 from last year. When Central Mountain Air made that change to Prince George, we kind of did feel a hit. However, they're starting to pick up their numbers again right now. People are starting to realize they can connect to more places through Prince George. And with the addition of Integra Air, we're hoping our numbers are gonna get a lot better from here on forward. Passenger numbers, okay. Aircraft movement's really good. In the last few months, they have picked up tremendously. We saw August hit over 1,068 movements and that was our busiest month of aircraft movements over the last couple of years actually, which in result means that our fuel sales seem to be going strong as well. So, that's really positive to look at the airport with our aircraft movements. Some news and notes, as you guys know, Integra officially launched to and from Calgary. With this flight going forward, we expect employers to implement more crew changes through Integra. We've had a couple people actually inquire already. Before the flight even happened, there was at least four people that inquired about this. We forwarded the information to Integra and I feel like as it goes on, more people are gonna become aware of this and it's only gonna get better. So, another thing I wanna touch upon is the ACAP program is restructuring their current operations. So, they are pretty much going from regional offices to a headquarters in Ottawa. So, they have cut, I believe, somewhere around 10 to 12 employees to restructure this whole program. So, with that being said, applications might take a little longer, so we'll need to be diligent going forward on making sure that it fits our timeline as well. So, we're currently getting ready for the winter. With all the new equipment coming, we expect a lot more efficient operation. We've had a good meeting this last month to get them ready for the winter and we're implementing monthly meetings as the winter goes along, so that we can make our operation a little bit more efficient as we go along. And the main thing is OT costs should be cut down with the addition of a new employee. This is gonna be great. We can have four guys out there doing different things, getting it done in half of the time that we usually do. So, our guys are excited about that. Another thing is we have that terminal canopy project, which is underway. It's expected to be finished in another month or two. It's a long overdue facelift for the airport, so we're looking forward to having that done. We also have the carving donated by Jetwind, great addition to the airport, starts to give us some character, a theme that we can develop. And thanks to the mayor for that. And that is it. Any questions, you guys?
Any questions? Well, welcome, Patrick, and thank you for that. And so, I did meet Patrick when we unveiled the carving and I know when they asked if they could put one there, Patrick had let them know that it needs to be something that was flying, so we do have a horsefly at our port.
Yeah.
So, I don't think we could take the one from the Jetwind Airport, but Counselor Parcel?
Yeah, well, welcome, Patrick. Thanks for your report. On a light note, I hear you're a Liverpool fan.
I am.
How are you feeling today?
Oh, well, they got thrashed this weekend, so.
Yes, I started to cry.
Oh, well, I had tears in my eyes as well.
So, you're the, only the saddened Liverpool fan I know of in this town.
Are you the first?
I'm, no, I'm. Of course, I'm numero uno, but there's a teacher at Central School called Mark Leffendahl and he is an avid Liverpool fan, so you're not alone. You'll never walk alone, right?
Perfect. Well, you never walk alone, there you go.
There's three of you.
There you go.
The Liverpool hymn is, "You'll Never Walk Alone," right?
It is. So, if you ever need to talk Liverpool stuff, phone the guy.
Just learn about yours.
One quick thing, marketing initiatives, programs and stuff like that, I'll give this to you. Staff knows about it, mayor knows about it.
Patrick has already spoken to NDIT about the funding to talk about eligibility.
Eligibility and everything is all.
Who've you been talking to? Derek?
Yeah, Derek.
Oh, and on that note, because I forgot to do it earlier, can I do that? Can I have some leeway here for a second?
Little bit.
Little bit. Duncan has been talking with Derek Baker and Joel about coming here and doing a presentation and stuff like that, so they've been emailing back and forth, so hopefully that'll happen soon. And then there was also the regional district actually passed a resolution at their last meeting that they're gonna be asked NDIT management to come up, so that might be a good opportunity to listen in.
Yeah, sure.
They're gonna do a presentation for us.
And Counselor Rogers, we'll get you a full list of grants available to you through NDIT.
Perfect, that's what we need.
He's already on the right path.
Does anyone else have any questions for Patrick? Well, thank you very much, Patrick.
No problem.
And again, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have a resolution to adjourn our closed meeting to October 21st, 24th, that's tomorrow at 8:30 AM. But Brenda, could you give us a little bit more detail on which section of the community charter this comes from?
Yes, unfortunately, the reasons to go into that closed meeting weren't included on the agenda, so I'll have to read them out. The resolution to adjourn to the meeting of the council, close to the public at 8:30 AM on October 24th. Agenda item 2.1, Section 90K, negotiations and related discussions respecting the proposed provision of a municipal service that are in their preliminary stages. Agenda items 3.1 and 4.1 is pursuant to Section 97, 1B, the minute says they were previously noted. And agenda items 5.1, Section 90J, information that is prohibited from disclosure under Section 21 of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. So, I would need a resolution to that effect.
So, do I have a, Counselor Schuman is moving the resolution, Counselor Wright-Godden is seconding it, all is in favor, opposed, all is let's carry. So, we'll see each other tomorrow at 8:30 in the morning and so I just need a motion to close the open portion of our regular meeting. Yes? Nope?
No, we've just adjourned to the close.
We just adjourned till tomorrow. Oh, okay. And then we'll continue on.
What time did you say?
8:30. 8:30 AM, right where you're sitting right now. All right, so we'll see you tomorrow. Thank you, everyone.